Start out with a letter I received from Misato, Japan. Dear Mayor Peterson, it is my pleasure to be able to send this letter to you along with the delegation from Misato. Thank you for hosting our thirty delegates from Misato. This year marks the twentieth time Misato ambassadors have visited Winona. I'm sure they will enjoy the rich nature of Winona this beautiful fall season. Last December, we had the honor of welcoming you to Misato for the first time. The Winona Fair went off splendidly. Many people in Misato were able to experience a lot of American culture through the junior high school students, goodwill, basketball game, jazz band performance, and Christmas celebration. I appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. This time, our ambassadors are planning to have some Japanese cultural activities in Winona. There will be four corners, each introducing a unique aspect of Japanese culture. Please experience each one for yourself and have a good time. Lastly, I pray that you and the people of Winona continue to prosper and flourish in the years to come. Sincerely yours, Seishi Azawa, Mayor of Misato. And I do, along with that, I'd like to say a huge thank you to everybody that was involved, all the ambassadors and their families, and the Winona International Friendship Association for their good work in making all of these people welcome in our city as they do when we visit there in the springtime. Also like to remind everybody that tomorrow is voting day. There's a referendum on the ballot, and everybody should be aware of that and do their duty and get out and vote. Also, remind everybody that alternate side parking will be starting on November fifteenth. And I'd also like to congratulate Councilman Porchakowski on his forty-four years at Peerless Chain and the nice article in the Winona Daily News yesterday. So with that, I'll ask if the city manager has anything that he'd like to share.
I do have one thing, Your Honor. On Wednesday, November eighth, at seven thirty a.m., at the outpost on Third Street, our Million Cups event is kicking off. And this is going to be a monthly event that will be held at the outpost, which really celebrates entrepreneurship. So we're really looking forward to our first meeting. It's sponsored by the, what's the, Kaufman Foundation, I think. And this is part of our outreach through community development for entrepreneurship. So if anybody can attend that, if you're interested, Wednesday, November eighth, seven thirty a.m. at the outpost. Yes?
What is the outpost?
The outpost is a gathering space that's next to the music store on Third Street, the guitar place.
Okay.
It's run by Matt Flouardi and Art of the Rural.
Okay.
So he's developed this place as, you know, he's using it for many different venues. So that's all.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Porchakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one is a sign request from the Chamber Young Professionals for a sign for Light Up Winona.
Take a motion to approve that request. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Carries?
Item three point two is a request for temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for Saint Mary's Church for Saturday, November eleventh.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Carries?
Item three point three is implementation of a new transit service. This is just for information for the council and the public. Beginning December first, the city's Winona Transit Service will begin a dial-a-ride service, which allows passengers to call in and have curb-to-curb service. The service will be the same at days and hours as our deviated route system, which is Monday through Friday, six a.m. to six fifteen p.m., Saturday nine to five. Rides on dial-a-ride are scheduled through a dispatch, either by calling the local phone number or scheduling online. A link will be available on the city's website later this month. Reservations can be made up to six days in advance. The ride is a dollar thirty per ride. And the service area is all of the city of Winona and Goodview and two miles outside of the city. If you have questions, you may call the dispatch or the city clerk's office.
This is an amazing opportunity for a lot of people, I think, to take advantage of this, you know, that are maybe elderly and can't drive anymore and need to get to the grocery store or doctor's appointments. I think it's wonderful. Michelle?
I was just going to say thank you, Monica, for working so hard to make this happen. I still wish we had some overnight deviation, but I think this is a great option for some people that have off-cycle work schedules that maybe the bus route doesn't cover. So I'm really pleased to see that we were able to get that grant, and I'm hoping that there's some way in the future we can convince the state that we need that off.
The night hours.
Yeah, we need the night hours. So, but great job, Monica. Thank you.
Item three point four is to request handicap parking at four oh six Mankato Avenue.
Move to approve the attached ordinance.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. So vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Carries?
Item three point five is the Bluffu-Montessori pedestrian crossing agreement between the school, the county, and the city.
Make a motion to direct administration to execute the attached agreement between the three entities.
I would second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion on this item? Michelle?
I'm really thankful Bluffu brought this forward and worked so hard to get it through and that the county is on board. I think that more than just those students will benefit. I've seen many, many people hopping across Gilmore there to get into the Saint Mike's Field facility for a variety of events. So I think this will be of great benefit to the community beyond just the school's use. So I'm really pleased it's come before us, and I hope we get the support we need to pass it.
Good. Al?
You know, my only, you know, I think this is a good thing as well as far as safety goes. You know, the entities involved, the city, the county, I'm a little concerned about Bluffu Montessori, whether or not, as an entity, if for some reason they decide to move or go elsewhere or whatever, that, you know, the city might be asked to refund the money they invested in this particular crossing, whereas this is pretty, pretty cut and dried that once it's spent, it's not going to be refunded should they not need it anymore, I guess, is my point. I'm just assuming that going forward.
Brian, can you speak to whether this could be removed if it's no longer needed at that spot?
Yeah. We would, the only thing you couldn't remove is the concrete that would be put in.
Right.
But the RRFPs would be the screw-in removable ones, so, and it'd be solar, so we wouldn't need them wired. They could be removed at any time.
Okay, good. Thanks for clarification.
Are we, are we still parking on both sides of Sarnia there for the soccer?
Absolutely.
So, so it would still benefit those parking on the south side if that were to happen, we'd still be benefiting people parking on the south side of Sarnia.
That would be Gilmore.
Safely crossed.
Yeah.
Or Gilmore, excuse me. Thank you.
Anything else? Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Carries?
Item three point six, JB Drive Sewer and Water Extension Petition.
I would move to grant and approve the attached resolution, which will start the process to set this up in the next few years.
I'll second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by George. Discussion? Paul?
So I, I'm wondering if, so I'm trying to, I was trying to figure out by the numbers here, if, if this has a potential to pay for itself in the future, or what are the costs to the rest of the residents in the, in the city for this extension?
I have an opinion on it, which is that we do these things all the time to provide the necessary infrastructure for, for our residents, and sometimes we do that without really looking at a strictly dollar in, dollar out. And obviously, by doing it now, by getting the process moving forward, the cost will be much, much less in the future. These people in this area have septic systems, much like the rest of Gilmore, Gilmore Valley Road. Back when the city annexed, went on a township, that was a critical need in that area. And the soils don't change from one side of Gilmore Valley Road to the other. So they're very clay soil, they're very impervious to using over a long period of time these septic systems. So they're failing. And not only are the petitioners concerned about this in the future, but also other residents who may not have signed the petition, but I know have similar sewer systems. Obviously, septic systems are good until they fail. But this way, there's an option for those people in that area to, you know, hook up when needed and hook up when this project is completed for them. So there is a, you know, a need for that.
Pam, I think you were next.
I, I would like to know something about the effect on the creek. If the septic systems are failing, or a certain number of them are failing, then aren't the others soon to follow? And is there an effect on the creek? And should we, why shouldn't we just go ahead and replace all of them if it's, if it's, if it's bound to happen?
Well, my understanding is they don't really have to technically be replaced until they start to fail. So, I mean, but then there'll be an option in place when that happens. And I, are they, are they inspected, septic systems inspected to function? I think the county has that duty to inspect those septic systems.
The county has the duty. It isn't always followed through with. Regarding the ones on the creek, there's probably five that above the creek out of, out of this whole subdivision. And as far as whether they're failing or not, not all of them are failing. A septic system depends on load, depends on soils, depends on occupancy, depends on water usage. So, I mean, if you have a house that has a good-sized septic system and maybe just mom and dad are still there, you're probably not even close to failing.
I think George was next, and then Michelle.
Yes, to Paul's question, this is the same process that was used when the water and sewer was extended to Westburns Valley. It started in Glen Mary, Glen Echo, and there because the systems were failing. And then long as they were right there, you were going to go out and feed another housing division along Highway forty-three, you might as well catch right onto Lozy Drive in your home and the rest of them right in there. And, you know, there's no doubt about it, you know, for the people that are asking for this or for anyone, that's the best investment you can make in your home, is having city water and sewer. Yeah, it's okay if there's one or two or three homes. Now you got twelve, fourteen, sixteen, twenty. Now it's a little different story. But this is the same process, Paul, that was used out in the Westburns Valley area.
Michelle?
I'm a strong proponent of hooking up to city services, not only because I think it increases the value of the home from a real estate perspective, but I happen to know the county has a point of sale, which is how many of these failing systems are discovered. And although there may be other options for people in this subdivision because the size of the lots, it's still better for us as a community if, and I know the state and county are both pushing that we hook our city residents up to services. So I'm in favor of that. But the question I have for you, Brian, is the nineteen or fifteen people that, I think nineteen residents have signed it.
Nineteen signed it, yep.
Are they all agreeing now to pay that four thousand dollar assessment to stub in?
At this point, the current policy is they pay when they connect. They pay the access fee and the assessment when they connect.
But we're going to stub them in and not charge them that four thousand dollar stub-in fee?
We do not charge them until they connect.
We should look at that.
Possibly. The other option would be not to stub them in, and that costs us a lot more on the road later. I have always thought it was fiscally more responsible for the city to stub it in, even if we're collecting a lady than wrecking our road time and time again.
Are you going to stub in every property then, along this route?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know in the past, we've given them the option not to stub in. Because some people aren't.
Currently, we do not do that just because the value of the road is so much higher.
Okay. That's what I want to make sure, is that if we were only going to stub in nineteen, that they paid that assessment. But if we're doing them all, then I'm, then I'm okay.
Right.
Paul?
So I, I, I agree with my fellow council members on all their points. In fact, environmentally, I think it's, it's really important when we have these bundled communities on septic to move them to city services. But just looking at the numbers, this looks like this is going to cost us a million dollars more than it potentially would recover in expenses. I just, that's, I just want to make that clear. Okay, thank you.
George, did you have something?
And in regards to the stubbing, I remember up on East Carvin Heights, we had that, you know, stub in, yes, no, whatever. Anytime the city goes by your property and they got that road open, take advantage of whatever you can hook up to. Replace a sewer line, a water line, do it. Because you're going to save a lot of money in the long run, then. Two years from now, it's gurgling out there, so. And the stubbing, I think, is a very good deal, so. Saves everybody a lot of trouble.
Anything else? Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Carries?
Item three point seven is Levy Park Update.
Chad?
Mayor and council, we'd like to give a brief update on Levy Park and the progress on the Main Street Gateway Project. Try and keep it brief, but wanted to give you a little bit more detail, again, on where the project is at. So we did run into some delays this spring and some weather delays actually in this August as well. And that's pushed the project behind schedule. So we're working with Wabashaw Construction on new final completion date, likely to be this spring. So I'll kind of go over that in detail here in a minute. You're looking at the southernmost section of this project. Again, this is Main Street, Second Street. This area has now the final overlay in this intersection. So intersection is open, obviously, up to the entrance of Levy Park. So the traffic east and west on Second is open, traffic traversing, I guess, north or south, you know, south of this Second Street intersection is open. There's been a lot of discussion about, well, we've heard a lot of discussion about the bumpouts. The city took a fire truck to this intersection. That fire truck is forty-seven feet, eight inches long. It's a single axle vehicle, and we had them traverse this intersection. And I'll show you that video here in a second. It was a probationary driver, so it was a driver that did not have a lot of experience with the truck. And our hypothesis was correct when we went through the intersection for the first time. And that hypothesis is, without the striping down on the road, the driver stopped a bit ahead of the stop sign and didn't make the corner going if he was heading east on Second, turning south. So we went back through the intersection again, without giving the driver any instruction. Second time, third time, fourth time, traversed the intersection with zero problems. So I, we believe that, you know, once the striping gets down, that, that will solve probably many of the problems that we have heard about drivers not being able to make this intersection. Just a second. Again, this is a truck traversing east, coming to the intersection, and then we'll take a right onto Main Street.
It's not really a tire mark on the truck.
That must have been from his first one, right?
So that was not his tire mark.
Okay.
So the curb is designed, the bumpout is designed to have a rollover location on the curb. If in the event that you need to traverse over it, again, in this case, we missed the curb by a foot or more. But if it, it is built that way to do that. Again, this is coming north down Main Street, and we're just going to take a right onto So you'll notice in this video, this is an interesting piece because the driver did not wave the next car that's stopped forward. So he traversed this turn without hitting that car or the parked car on the corner.
Well, I'm pleased that we won't have him hitting people on video.
Job security. For a firefighter.
That's a different brand of movie.
So again, traveling west on Second, you notice a semi passed us. There is room on either side. And this is stopping at the stop sign at Second and making the corner, heading south on Main. Again, car parked at the most southern point or northern point on that street as well. So again, single axle truck, that was the question that we had, was single axle SU40s making those corners. This was, again, forty-seven foot, eight inch truck made those turning radiuses. The plan for this section of the road as well is to have the street, Main Street, open north to the alleyway. So I'll get to that here in a second. So this is that, this is traversing north on Main, getting closer to the park. This is the alleyway. This is the Wizards Building. This is the movie theater. The plan is to have this section of the road down to Second, and the alleyway is open on November thirteenth. So they're working this week to make sure that that is open. We are basically waiting for some layman's terms. There are decorative curb stops here so that vehicles going in that area aren't actually traversing onto the sidewalk. So again, plan is to have that open on the thirteenth. Primary reason, again, is to provide access for businesses east and west. We do have deliveries. It opens up the parking lot as well behind the movie theater, or better access, I guess, behind the movie theater. That lot has been open during the project. So again, it's a darker picture, but this is the alleyway. You can see that the pavements have been placed. The last piece was this circle element in the middle of the intersection to act, I guess, to layman's terms, a mini roundabout that is a mountable curb as well for if there are, in fact, larger trucks that need to traverse that alleyway. That was the last pour that needed to be done. The area then north going toward the park will be still a construction zone, so there'll be fencing here, so stop vehicular traffic that would, would, I guess, traverse into this pedestrian area. So again, Main, Second, north on Main would remain open to the alleyway. The pedestrian area would remain closed until next spring. So again, this is an image looking south on Main Street. This is the pedestrian area. You can see that several of the features are in. It's maybe a little bit dark. You can see that the art wall is not complete yet. So there are some features that still need to be worked on yet this year and into spring. The railroad crossing is the next section as we go north. We are still doing some negotiation with the railroad on the landscaping area here within the park. The crossing is a hundred percent secured, and the railroad has now done their part on the railroad crossing. That part is now complete. That little section was holding us up, but it is, again, as you can see, now complete, so the pads are now in place for that crossing. So this is obviously the northernmost track on the UP line, and so that work is now completed. We'll need to abut to both sides of this track area to create the full crossing.
Chad?
Yes?
Were any railroad tracks taken out at all?
Um, yes. A significant amount of track was taken out. And in effect, what it did is take out the second and third southerly line, I guess. So if you, if you look at, the northernmost track stays in place, the next two lines to the south. Because of the linear foot, feet they took out and the switches they took out, they are no longer in service. It doesn't mean they can't, the UP couldn't bring them back, but when they took that out, in, in effect, took those lines out as well. So it's just that northernmost line.
Will that still be used as a storage area?
Yep, they will still store cars on that track. They've been very receptive to not doing it in front of patio area, but east and west of that, the plan is still to store cars there. So obviously, not that any other area is any less significant, but certainly the patio area is a significant area of this project. The walls have been built and the stairs and the large wall that forms the sloped lawn and then back to the sidewalk area. Those walls have been poured and formed. You can see them a little bit in this picture with the railroad crossing. And this is, again, that wall. Stairs are built, and a significant wall to the east is complete. The other features of the patio are not complete, and part of that was our request. Once we knew that there would be a delay in this project, we requested that the patio area actually wait until the spring, because there are several materials in this area, and we'd like it to be poured all at the same time. So there's concrete, colored concrete, and concrete pavers. So the thought process here is there's some, you know, there's some design elements with the concrete, or the color concrete and the concrete pavement. We felt that if they poured that late in the year and didn't finish, that we'd get a patchwork look on the patio. So you might get a nice light gray in fall and a stark white in spring, or a different color, and you're going to get a patchwork look. So we've asked them to do that in the spring, and at that point, complete the water feature that is in this area as well. The last piece is the trail coming off of the bridge connection across Johnson Street that comes through the park. And then the, we obviously redid the entire parking lot, number nine. That is now, has its first lift in place. So the pavement is done, or the, for the parking lot, and paving for the path that's coming through. I will note in this photo, you can see that we did replace, as part of the bond project, we did replace the roof of the boathouse, repainted the boathouse. Currently are finishing the HVAC improvements to the building. They should be done by the end of the month. We stuccoed, did some enhancements to the base of the building, and then repainted the letters or the, and repainted the, actually, the colors of that building. So that is complete. Again, difficult maybe in this picture. You can see the boathouse here, but this is just the pathway that comes in and ends at the park. I also showed you this picture just from the stark dramatic effect of, this is what the track currently looks like. If you can remember what the track looks like with the new concrete pad, it's certainly different. And that's what we are still negotiating with the railroad, is to try and make some enhancements east and west. The other significant delay is the landscape plan. So it's really hard to see in this picture, other than if you can see all the black, kind of the black or darker areas are all locations where there's going to be plantings. So again, when we knew that there would be a delay in the project with the weather we had, we requested that the plantings all be done in the spring. So when I say significant landscape plan, to give you an idea, we're planting forty-six trees in this area. There's going to be over two-hundred-and-fifty shrubs and a significant amount of sod and grasses. And so to do that late in the year, in consultation with the subcontractor, we decided to wait until spring, again, until appropriate planting season. It came in too late. We didn't want a significant piece of the landscape plan to not make it through the winter, just to be blunt. So we asked for that to be delayed until the spring. So again, that's the update on Levy Park and where we are. Again, we expect to be open late, late spring with the park.
Thank you for that update. Al, you have a question?
Yeah, I appreciate the update, Chad. I know you're not an engineer, but when you showed us the video of the, of the fire truck making it through the making it through the intersection at Second and Main, um, does that also take into account how cyclists will be using that intersection when, when vehicles are in the same lane, either turning or going straight in other direction? I know I had a constituent who at least contacted me about that and they're an avid cyclist and they have a concern about a potential conflict, um, at that intersection.
So Mayor and Council, we've approached that intersection, especially with, you know, the path coming into the park and we expect certainly there to be cyclists in that area, certainly with businesses in that area, and we look at it as a shared road. Either they're gonna need to be in front of the traffic or behind the vehicle, I guess, in a sense, not the traffic. We look at it as a shared space. So it's certainly narrower in that area to slow down the traffic and to make it that, again, that feel, the pedestrian feel and that comfort level. I think it's probably a shared road space more from Second Street east and west. On Main Street, I think cyclists, in a sense, may get used to using the bump outs as a way to cross without riding and then continue on their way once they've reached the other side of Main Street. So whether they're not, whether they're going into the park, they may end up walking their bicycle because those bump outs stop and actually walk. If you're coming out of the park and heading toward downtown, you actually stop and then walk and then get back on the road. But ultimately, we look at it as a shared road space with cyclists.
Is there gonna be any indication that this kind of modification of travel is needed for both vehicles and, and cyclists? I guess, you know, I mean, sometimes it's not obvious, maybe it is, but at least to me, it doesn't seem to be obvious and maybe there's some signage or something that can be done to direct or at least make users of that road aware of the, the narrow road.
Sure, we can, we can take a look at signage, you know, once the stripings are in and everything is complete.
And maybe it'll work this time, so, you know. That'll be something to be considered.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Chad, for the update.
Moving on to unfinished business. Item four point one is the partners in energy program.
Make a motion to approve the plan?
Second.
Motion by Paul and seconded by Michelle. Discussion?
I'd just like to thank John Howard and Pam Newell and the Energy Action Team for all their work on the plan. I think it's an opportunity for, for the city to, to set some goals, especially in light of the, the report that came out this week on climate change. And I think it shows that we're leading the way in providing strategies and incentives for the city's residents, businesses and institutions to save energy and save money. So I just wanna thank them for their work.
John, did you wanna add anything?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'd like to just thank all the community partners and Excel for helping us along this process. We got a lot of great information through this partnership and I can certainly answer any questions, again, in some of the specifics of the plan, but yeah, I'm just, I'm very grateful for the help we've got, the community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for John? I guess not, thank you. Ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Item four point two is Masonic Temple Surplus Property in Auction.
Get Chad back up there.
Mayor and Council would like to start with a brief announcement. The mayor, the manager, staff and community members have secured pledges in the amount of seventy thousand dollars toward the restoration of the ten drops. And so with, with the previous twelve thousand plus dollars we have at the Community Foundation, we secured an additional, um, several donations, I guess, or pledges to total that seventy thousand. These pledges will allow us to seek bids for the restoration of the ten drops and we'll seek that authorization, authorization at the first meeting in December. So we'll bring another, an action item back to authorize us to go out for a bid to do the restoration process. So just wanted to lead off with that tonight, let everybody know that we were successful in, in securing those pledges. With the item before you tonight, staff is recommending we declare the seventy-three drops, approximately thirty-four scenic pieces and the hardware for the ninety-nine rigging line sets as surplus. And again, if you concur, you'd make that motion and that would set into motion the process for us to sell those items.
Shall move.
Second.
Motion by Carrie and seconded by Michelle. Other discussion?
When would these go on auction?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we're looking at mid-November to start the sale with the sale ending the end, uh, November thirtieth. And then, you know, we could bring an update to Council, the, the meeting on the fourth, if there would be a sale. So we're looking at, we're probably about a week to ten days away from starting the sale, ten day, typically seven to ten day sale and then see what happens from there.
We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Under new business, item five point one is tax forfeited properties. I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? George?
Yeah, could Lucy, whoever, explain just a little more detail?
Yes, I'm sorry, Nick Larson's gonna address this.
What we're all doing with all four of them here?
Mayor, Council, uh, with two of them, we're looking for for eight sixty-three East Broadway, nine seventeen East King, is to work with the county to get those for below market rate value, hopefully even made or sold at a very low rate. And then we have a six-month period to come up with a development plan for affordable housing. I have had conversations with Habitat for Humanity and Minnesota Southeast Tech and their Carpentry Technology Program about creating a partnership of how can we utilize these small lots and build smaller homes and thus them being smaller, less construction costs and if you can take away the land costs, make them even more affordable and at least put two more homes within our housing stock and give a couple more families some housing stability in their town.
So the home on East Ninth, would that be remodeled or would that be tore down and rebuilt?
Very good question. With that, I'll be going in there with county staff along with a building official and then Jonathan, Jonathan Powell, he's the instructor for the Construction Technology Program out at the tech school and his day-to-day job is the general contractor. So I'm gonna bring him in there also and use those folks' professional experience and knowledge to find out if that home can be rehabbed in place or if it would be demoed down to the foundation and try to figure out our options with there within that six-month period. And I have already had conversations with Greg Carroll, our building official, of what size home could go there and what the fire code is, energy code and, and what our options are, at least to have preliminary conversations with Habitat and with Minnesota State College Southeast.
Thank you. Good plan.
Any other questions?
I think this is a great partnership between the county and Southeast Tech and it gives students real-world projects to work on and starts to address some of our housing shortages. Good work.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Item five point two is a Small Cities Development Program Preliminary Proposal. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Jerry. We'll ask Nick to come back up and say a few things about this item as well.
Mayor, Council, uh, this is for authorization to submit our preliminary application proposal to deed for an owner-occupied rehab program that we're looking to implement from Liberty Street to Hamilton and then front down to King. If we do receive the funding for this, this will complement the award that we just recently received from Minnesota Housing for three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and that area ran from Franklin to Hamilton and then front all the way down to Marks. So we're trying to complement the funding between these two funding sources to really make a large impact within what I call within the application are east central neighborhoods in, in Winona.
That's a good program. Six-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
The previous for Minnesota Housing was three-hundred-and-twenty-five and for this one, um, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand is what we're asking for. To be able to rehabilitate fifteen homes with the deed funding and we estimate thirteen homes with the Minnesota housing funding.
Do you have the homes already selected, Nick, or are they, is this in a application process and, and is it LMI or what's the criteria?
We have identified a few homes. What we, what staff has been able to do is we did a survey targeted specifically to this geographical area and what we asked them is how many people live within the household, what the gross household income is, if they feel that they have a need or an interest within housing rehabilitation activities. And we gathered all that information and from this area, we had, we identified ninety-nine homes that we could consider substandard need, if they need a roof, paints, chipping, patient soffit, you know, old wood, single pane windows, we, those items right there we can consider substandard. And out of the survey, we were able to identify twenty-eight households that are LMI or they make eighty percent of AMI, um, area median income or lower and are interested within the funding program.
The ninety-nine homes were identified, so we, we have plenty of housing stock that needs to work.
Yeah, with that, it was me actually canvassing, walking all the blocks within that area and making notes on, just on the exterior of the homes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I just have a question. Are we integrating the energy improvements that we're talking about also with this kind of rehabbing of older homes?
Yes, we are. Uh, with that is also being a member of the Energy Action Team, what we have been doing with our rehab programs is really taking a hard look at the insulation levels, if they do have single pane, uninsulated windows, wood interior entry doors, trying to make those simple improvements right there. Part of the application or language within the application that's for this Minnesota deed and for the Minnesota housing is trying to get these households to sign up for the energy audits. If they do make fifty percent of AMI or lower, we're able to get the low-income squad in there so we can get that for free, which is a benefit. Um, and if these households are fifty percent of AMI or lower, then we can also get them signed up and see if they're eligible for weatherization services, either through SEMCAC or through Excel, along with financial help with your utility bills, mainly their heating bills. And Excel also offers an appliance replacement program where energy inefficient chests, freezers, refrigerator, window AC units, Excel can come in and swap those out, recycle them appropriately and put energy efficient units in for these households. So we're trying to complement, use every, all of our resources that we have regionally and statewide, trying to complement and layer everything to make a more impactful project.
Thanks.
George?
Uh, I think I asked once before on our plan, what is the role of the federal government in this? Anything? Any funding from them to this?
With this particular program, this funding would go from HUD to Minnesota deed and so the state gets their allocation from HUD and then through the cities and counties we apply within a competitive grant application process to bring some of those funds to our communities. So it all does come from HUD and that's a concern with this funding source in the future, I'm sure.
Man, there's some talk about perhaps maybe not funding these programs.
This particular one, this would be one of the community block grant programs and that's definitely one that has been spoken about of being on that chopping block, if you will.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Good job. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Item five point three is the Downtown Winona Historic Survey Contract with Landscape Research. Make a motion to authorize state staff to enter into the final contract with Landscape Research.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Luke, you wanna come up and give a little summary of this?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This new survey will be the first survey conducted for downtown historical research in the city of Winona, downtown District City East Commercial District and the Third Street Commercial District. In twenty-five years, this will provide a new updated list of properties that can go onto our local register and onto the national register, as well as integrate the two different registers. Currently, we have one property that is locally designated but not nationally designated. In the last twenty-five years, we've had significant change in the downtown area, including some new properties that may be available for national register designation as they prefer twenty, or fifty years, excuse me, for designation. In addition to the consolidation and the reassessment, we will be looking at integrating the new State Historic Preservation Office forms, which were actually changed midway through our bidding process. So we had a grant approved from State Historic Preservation Office back in August. Unfortunately, because of the change, we actually asked that our two proposals that were submitted be revised to address that. So we have updated GIS use both locally and for state users and making sure that our forms are up to date with Chicago Guidelines. We, uh, of the two applicants that came forward, one was within our budget, Landscape Research coming before you at nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars versus PBN, which came in at substantially higher, around double. Available for questions?
Al, I've got a question. You know, we recently adopted a new zoning ordinance with form-based design. How does this all integrate into that?
Our form-based design would be applying to any new buildings that would be going into it substantially indicated toward fire properties. Those are designed to integrate with the historic properties but not be trying to blend it in historical nature. State Historic Preservation Guidelines do not want us to replicate past architectural styles, but instead integrate with new architectural styles that are complementary. So you're gonna see some of ours, uh, some of our new form-based codes address building material, for example, but do not dictate having a nineteen thirties exterior.
Interesting. It'll be interesting then.
I know there's a number of properties that would, were, I'm sure, non-contributing properties when the survey was done that are now contributing properties because of work that's been done to the, uh, the buildings. And I know this firm and the people involved and I'm sure they'll do an excellent job. I don't have any concerns about them.
George?
Yeah, just one question for I, for my own knowledge, I guess, or for everyone's. If I do have a building that can possibly, possibly go on the local historic, uh, register, do I have to go on there? Is it my choice? And if I decide to go, what would be the biggest benefit for me?
We try to work with local partners and not do nominations unilaterally and making sure that those who own, own buildings want to be put on the registers. Uh, the benefits would be historic tax credits. Historic tax credits allow significant reinvestment in local districts, essentially. What you see is actually for every dollar spent, oh, well over a dollar gets reinvigorated into the economy, which is a great benefit for many communities that utilize historic tax credits. We're seeing a number of projects here in downtown Winona that are utilizing those tax credits and it's to great benefit, both aesthetically and for cherishing the history of the city.
Thank you.
Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Item five point four is to renew the Safe Ride Agreement with Winona State and St. Mary's.
Move to approve, uh, the agreement?
Second.
Motion by George and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Excellent program. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Item five point five is the Winona State University Campus Parking Enforcement Agreement and Ordinance. Make a motion to approve and execute the agreement.
Motion by Michelle and eagerly seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Jerry, none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
And item five point six is the renewed review of the twenty-hour parking ordinance.
All right. This, uh, this was prompted last summer, I guess, when several council people asked for this to be looked at. Chief is here. Do you wanna provide a summary or take questions?
Um, Mayor and Council, I kinda summarized our proposal as what we looked at and our understanding was, uh... understanding was what was being thought of is to extend the twenty-hour so that vehicles could possibly be parked on the street longer. It seemed to make sense that through the weekends would be an issue. So seventy-two hours was looked at as an option, and that would allow people to either intentionally or, you know, if they forget their vehicle over the weekend, not be in violation with a little leeway on either side. It does present a little bit of issues with the enforcement and the continuity of having one officer mark the vehicle, and that officer being able to come back at the end of the three days and put together the evidence that that vehicle had not moved within that seventy-two hours. Typically, right now, as the twenty-hour ordinance is, our day shift handles those calls. It's a complaint basis. Somebody notices a vehicle that's been parked in excess of twenty hours, they call our department, an officer is dispatched, and then marks that hour, or that vehicle, and the twenty hours starts at that point. That officer is, prior to sending that officer, dispatch confirms that they'll be on the following day, so it's the same officer that will return and be able to testify if it's challenged in court that whatever they did to mark or note that that vehicle was parked in that exact parking spot is where they were the following day. And so after being sent, marking the vehicle, coming back twenty hours later, if the vehicle is still there, a citation is issued. There's then a mandated four-hour waiting period before a vehicle can be towed, and if it's still there after four hours or a little more than four hours, that vehicle is towed and impounded. The seventy-two-hour, three-day option would obviously, you would double that. Vehicle would hopefully be there for more than seventy-two hours. If somebody were to call it in, then an officer would be sent, and the same process would be followed with the four-hour wait at the end. So basically, it's how long the vehicles would be parked. It is one of the big factors, how long the vehicles are to be left on the street. One thing I will note, our day shift officers that take care of these calls use very good judgment and discretion when dealing with vehicles, especially on weekends and holidays. If it looks like a vehicle's been parked there for some time, they're probably going to mark it and possibly tow it on the weekend. If it looks like it might have just been left there recently, they may deal with it in another way. Included in the agenda item, I put the numbers in just for this year, from January one to October thirty-first, we responded to two hundred and sixty-nine twenty-hour complaints. Of those, officers issued eighty-two citations, so roughly one-third of those ended up in citations. The rest had, obviously moved one way or the other, whether they were contacted by the officer, or whether they noticed a mark on their vehicle, or just in the course of their daily actions, moved that vehicle. That pretty much summarizes it. If there are any questions, it'd be more than.
I think so, too. I asked the chief to look into what other communities do, and it looks like most communities our size in Minnesota have a twenty-four-hour ordinance, so very similar to ours. Mankato, St. Cloud, University, communities have very similar ordinance. Can I see where staff is recommending a twenty-hour, you know, can we continue the twenty-hour rule? So I don't know how, how other council members feel, but Paul?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thanks, Chief, for looking, looking at this. I know I have gotten calls from constituents who own a home, who have had their vehicle towed, and they were away on vacation, and it cost them over a thousand dollars to get their vehicle back from, from impoundment facility. So certainly, they have some responsibility here as well. Is there any particular reason why we have twenty hours and not twenty-four hours?
That was long before my time. I don't know what the rationale was. The only thing I can guess is perhaps the state mandated four-hour waiting period was included or added to the twenty hours rather than having a twenty-four. That would be my best guess, but not having that information, I'm not quite one-hundred percent sure.
So I'm wondering if it'd be possible to maybe go to twenty-four, which is similar that, to what other communities have. So, you know, if somebody moves from one community and comes here, and they have this experience, that, that would be, that would kind of level the playing field a little bit. The other thing I'm wondering is, is that maybe we need to do a better job of communicating to kind of, to help our homeowners and the people who are, who are potentially leaving their cars out on the street for more than this period of time. Communicate to them somehow, maybe through the water bill, or somehow so that that message is out and distributed. So let's say somebody who's new to the community doesn't know what this is, and they buy a home, they're paying their taxes, and they leave their car on the street for more than this period of time, and they're away visiting grandpa and grandma, and they come home and their car is gone. And they've just bought a house in our community. So, you know, is there a way that we can, you know, improve this kind of communication? That's what I'm wondering.
I don't know. Maybe there is. Jerry? Or Pam is next, actually. I think you had a question.
Let's see. I don't really have a question. I did receive a fair number of phone calls on this issue, and the people in third ward that I heard from were definitely in favor of keeping the shorter time limit, that they are plagued occasionally by cars left for a long period of time. So that's all, it was just a comment, not a question.
Jerry?
Many times when these complaints come in, and I too have, you know, over the years, and recently as well, they like it the way it is. One of the reasons we're trying to do this is get the, the turnover, so you can, you know, we can get the cars moving, and it, and it has worked. On the rare cases where somebody calls because it was towed, because of whatever reason, dig a bit deeper, not in all, but in many of the cases is, is another issue. It was towed during the weekend, that maybe they were gone, but it might also been there three to four weeks prior to that, for a long period of time. I know what I did in my neighborhood, I would talk to the neighbors and let them know so the calls didn't come in. If I knew that I was going to be gone for a couple of days, and I couldn't rotate the car when it was not alternate side parking time, when it was the other time. And it seemed to work, but if, if not, you never know. So it's the old-fashioned thing about inspections and a variety of other things, more communication with the neighbor. It's, it's even more important than knowing the laws, is communication with the neighbor, and these calls won't come in. Again, when it happens, if you peel back or ask the story, there's usually more of the story why somebody called on this particular car. Not all cases, but in some cases, that's, in many cases, that's the case.
Michelle?
I think the system works pretty well, because I'm looking at the numbers, and I'm doing the math in my head, and if you round up to around thirty thousand people, and we've only had two hundred and sixty-nine calls, to me, that's so few people that aren't doing what they're supposed to do. And then of that, only eighty-two of them didn't respond to our attempt to try to get them to move their car. So I feel like, I mean, I don't feel like there needs to be anything else done. I think it's the responsibility of anyone moving into a community to learn the rules of that community, the ordinances that affect you as a homeowner, or a renter, or a business owner. And I, I, if the numbers were much higher, I would say there's communication issue, but for me, eighty-two citations out of almost a whole year is so few people that aren't doing what they're supposed to do. I, I think that, I think it works. I think it keeps the neighborhoods that are heavily rental with the possibility of having people visit and park on the street. So I'm in strong favor of keeping it at twenty. I'm in strong favor of keeping the system the way it is. I think it works for the police department and for the inspections department. And I've found it is such a small window of time when we don't have alternate side parking anyway. And I, I believe the police are probably very aware of holidays, so if someone's really leaving on a holiday to visit family, I'm going to guess that the police aren't specifically out towing for that weekend on Thanksgiving. I could be wrong, but my guess is Jerry's right. If the car's being towed, it's because it's been there longer than just Thanksgiving or Christmas weekend. So I'm in favor of it as stands currently.
Al?
How does this work for, say, construction trailers or roll-off dumpsters that are, you know, in a street? Is that covered under separate, or is that also part of this?
We have a permit that we can issue for the roll-off dumpsters and construction equipment, and they come down to our office and get those permits. And it can be a daily, weekly, monthly.
So can this then, the permitting process, once people are made aware, as Councilperson Scholmeyer suggested, aware of the ordinance and rules, can't that apply to someone who has need to park a vehicle on a street for a longer period of time than that twenty-hour process? What would that take to have that happen?
I, I, yeah, I, I know where you're going, Councilman, thoroughly with that, and I, I would be concerned about that going, getting out of hand. We, we would be getting all kinds of permits to keep cars parked for long periods of time, I think, if that, if that were an option for feasible.
So you would feel that would be an onerous burden on the staff then to decide
Yeah, yeah.
whether somebody gets it and somebody doesn't get it, and I can understand that as well.
I don't particularly think the system is broken. I, I think that we've just had, you know, some unfortunate communication breakdowns, and that's going to happen in any community.
And going forward, we'd nice revisit it as well. I think, Council. George?
Most people that I know, they have driveways, and they use them. My daughter lives up in Apple Valley. The first time I went up to visit them, I said, "What is the rule for parking out on the street?" No cars can be parked there after eleven o'clock at night, Sunday through Saturday. So is it simply the information right there, and you should know where, you should be able to park, park a car? So with that, I would make a motion to continue to operate under the twenty-hour rule.
Second that.
Motion by George, and seconded by Pam. Further discussion? I'd like to thank the chief and the staff for looking into this, and I think it's a good conversation, and it's healthy to talk about this. I just keep thinking about this one young man that called me one day, and he was upset that his car was towed. And like Jerry, you dig a little deeper, and you find out that his car had a flat tire, was parked in front of a business downtown, and had been sitting there for a week. And finally, the business owner called, and he said, "But, you know, I was going to buy a new tire. Now I can't afford a new tire." Well, just bought the tire in the first place, and moved his car, he would have been fine. So I think there usually are circumstances, and I think oftentimes, that, you know, again, you communicate with your neighbors. If the car, or you have a motor home that's out there, you're going to be going on vacation, it's going to be there for a couple of days. You know, I think if you have the kind of communication you should have with your neighbors, you're going to be fine. Thank you for looking into it. And we have a motion, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Item five point seven is the memorandum of understanding for the sex trafficking and training grant.
Make a motion to approve the attached memorandum of understanding.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion on this? Michelle?
I'm sorry that we have need of this in our community, but I'm glad that you're proactively looking for ways to educate and combat this issue. So I'm obviously in support of it.
Al?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive as well. This is one of those things that kind of gets a little under the table. Not too many people realize it, but it really does happen, excuse me, in our community. Just important.
Pam?
I just have a question. When you say there's been an increase, can you, can you quantify that? Can you tell how much of an increase?
We've, we've had some of our officers and investigators go to the trainings, and I think some of the increase is their awareness and being able to identify it's been going on. And the more they look into it, the more they've found over the years. So we started out with a case here and a case there, and now it's on a more steady basis. It hasn't been around, you know, here as far as being actively investigated long enough to have real good numbers, but it's more of a, we've just noticed there, there's, there's plenty of activity out there for not only us, but this region, and that's one of the things with this grant that'll help. It encompasses a number of different counties and departments, because they don't stop at the jurisdictional boundaries, obviously.
And what, for what amount is the grant?
The county, I believe it's about approximately two hundred and twenty-one thousand, give or take a little. It's for training, overtime for investigations, and I believe part of it that they put in was for some type of an analyst. Whether or not they get that grant, we don't know. But what it would do for us as a partner agency is pay for some of the training that we're already paying for, so we'd be reimbursed for any future training, reimbursed for any overtime expenditures that we have, and just allow us to put more time into those investigations.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, no, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Carrie's.
And item five point eight, excuse me, theater do Mississippi lease agreement for use of the Masonic Temple.
Make a motion to direct staff to enter into the lease agreement.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You were watching the lady run out of the.
I was wondering what was going on.
She was running out of the chamber.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with Al.
We have a significant event coming up. I'm sure Councilperson Craig will probably cover that at his time on Saturday. So needless to say, it's something we all need to recognize. And I am proud to report that the Blacktop Paving Company that's been working on our mill and overlay streets within the city has completed, as of today, the mill and overlay for West Gilmore Avenue from Highway sixty-one until the end of it there. So that's good. And I concur with the mayor and his comments on thanking all the volunteers who made Winona really shine for our ambassadors who visited us from our sister city in Masada, Japan. And finally, also, on Veterans Day, I always take this opportunity to wish my wife, Bonnie, a happy birthday.
Thank you. Jerry?
This Friday, it marks the two hundred and thirty-second birthday of the United States Marine Corps, so if you know any Marine, wish him a happy birthday, or her a happy birthday. And then at midnight that night, going for twenty-four hours, that will be Veterans Day. And as we have done for close to twenty-some years, I can't recall how many, there will be the twenty-four-hour Veterans Vigil held down at Veterans Park near the ban shell. So please come down there, and you could certainly stand watch with somebody, go to the basement, the bunker, as they call it, the basement of the ban shell, chat with some folks, and enjoy some, some good food that's always going to be down there, or just take a quiet moment of reflection during those twenty-four hours. So it's welcome, it's open to everybody, and fortunately, this year, the, the weather is going to be somewhat cooperative. That is it for this evening.
Michelle?
Well, apparently, I need to wish Jerry and Steve a happy birthday. Two hundred and thirty-two, you look good.
Well, thank you. I wasn't a double dog, so.
Oh, Army.
My father was.
Army, oh, it was your dad, yes. Well, happy birthday to your dad. I'm just going to mirror what Al thoroughly and Mark said. The Japanese had a great visit. The staff here did an outstanding job welcoming them. They had an absolutely great time in the city this, this past October, and I know that the April ambassadors are looking forward to their trip there as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Pam?
I understand that the Winona Community Warming House is open again this year, is going to be opening soon, if it hasn't already. And this is a, this is a place where people without a warm place to stay can, can, can find a place to stay overnight. And it requires a lot of volunteer effort, and a lot of businesses and organizations in the community, and I think it's just great.
It opened November first.
November first.
Paul? Paul?
Thank you. I want to thank the Minnesota Climbers Association for their work in collaboration with the Winona Outdoor Rock Alliance on Sugarlo, on October 28th, they did a lot of invasive clean, clearing, and, and some cleanup. And also, we, I had an opportunity to walk the, the new trail on the north face, and it's, it's really an excellent opportunity to now do, take that hike, and, and it's a little more relaxing, a little less stressful. And I would like to get some signs up as soon as possible on the south face, so our staff doesn't have to clean up all that sand that erodes from, from the, from the trail, the non-access trail, at the, at the pump station there. So some signage would be great, because I, there are still people, even, even yesterday, when I was out for a walk, still people parking there by the pump house and accessing the trail that way. But it's really looking good up there.
Thank you. George?
Thank you. Congratulations and good luck to the Winona Senior High School Boys Football Team as they go up to state again. I believe they have a game this weekend, and they have given us some very, very good, exciting Novembers in football. Sometimes a little bit better than the Minnesota Vikings. But good luck and congratulations to them, and I know that they will do well. They're well-coached and a good group of young men. And also, this past Saturday, four wrestlers were inducted into the Winona Senior High School Hall of Fame, and I'd just like to send out a special congratulations, of course, to all four of them, but to Lee Uwold and George Henthorn. Happy Veterans Day. Thank you.
And under the consent agenda, there are three items. The approval of the minutes from October 16th, the final adoption of an ordinance for proposed liquor license fees for 2018, and a claim against the city by Teresa Alair.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn. Hang on to this, sir.